I told you.
My name is Paul.
I don't know if it's not.
I called her.
But he's trying.
Don't be good.
Yeah, you only.
Because I told you, I said, I would call. And I said, and I thought, oh, no.
Yeah.
All right. So what am I on the family to do?
I had bad insurance.
She is just going up.
Well, you're right. How's it doing? How's it doing? Everybody?
Very good.
If I could say one thing tonight. Oh, yeah. He got me.
I don't really understand.
Tell them my name. I said, I said, yeah, so the fire phone where it's at. You know something, please.
Yeah, yeah. He did that, bro. Yeah, yeah.
Bless the whole world. Do you feel boring with the answer?
No. Didn't need that.
Now you go, Hal.
It'll be hard to admit.
I know, I see the reason I was giving you the paper.
The mayor?
Why I got mine?
He is. Oh, I know. I know, I know. Anybody see me? He does the job of the talent. And what it's like that. Like a race down the street. Oh, gosh. He just has time. Oh, all the time. All the time.
All right, thank you, everybody, for being patient with us and coming out of the second session. There will be no bite on what we did in the second session. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight for the Georgia City Council meeting. For February the second, two thousand twenty-one. Councilwoman, um, Mrs. Free, can you say the prayer words, please?
With all hearts and minds clear, let us pray. Father God, I come to you tonight with a humble heart, and I want to thank you for all of the blessings that are allowing this meeting tonight. I pray that you will fill our hearts, our minds, and our souls with a spirit of unity that will transform all our efforts into a great and prosperous Darlington. I pray that you will guide our deliberation to be in your will and multiply our gains as only you can. Father, I pray that you will keep us all safe and healthy during this pandemic. We pray for the doctors, the nurses, the first responders. And dear Lord, I pray that you will grant peace and comfort to the many families that have lost loved ones during this pandemic. Bless this meeting tonight, all those present and all those whom our decisions will occur. I ask these blessings in the name of the Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
I say, and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, do I have a motion to approve of approval of minutes for the city council meeting, one five four one one? Do you mind so moved?
I'll second.
Mr. Nettles?
Aye.
Mrs. Free? Second. Um, Siri, thank you.
Aye, the motion is approved.
Do I have a motion to approve a meeting, a meeting agenda for tonight?
I make the motion that we approve the meeting agenda for Tuesday, February second, two thousand twenty-one, city council meeting.
I'll second. Nettles? Nettles? Miss Backus? Siri? Thank you. Mrs. Siri? All right, now, report of standing committees and drawings to downtown Revivalization Association, Mrs. Lee, so long.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The D D R A is collaborating with Joe's Grill for its annual chili championship and car show on Saturday, March sixth, from eleven a.m. to two p.m. Cook teams will buy the best, the title of best chili in town, and the proceeds will go towards the fire department. Tasting risk fans can be purchased that morning at Joe's Grill for five dollars, and the people will choose the champion. We'll be outside, so people can socially distance as appropriate. The D D R A will also present its two thousand twenty Member of the Year Award during the Chamber's annual banquet on March eighteenth. Members will be receiving a survey in the mail soon to make their selection for the person or business that has impacted the economic climate in Darlington the most in two thousand twenty. As members of the city council, you'll, you are also eligible to vote on behalf of the city. We are also moving forward to invite teams to participate in our annual D D R A golf tournament on Wednesday, April fourteenth, at Darlington Country Club. The four-man captain choice tournament includes delicious lunch, beverages, and a wonderful afternoon of golf. Thank you to Carolina Bank, Darlington Raceway, Nationwide Insurance, Fitness World Gyms, and M P V Electric for their support that makes this event possible. We're still looking for golf teams, full sponsors in bitty bag donations for this fun day on the golf course. We will also be continuing our monthly member breakfasts at eight a.m. on Thursday, February twenty-fifth, at Toppy's Diner. We do these every month on the fourth Thursday of the month. The meals are at no charge for D D R A members and a small five-dollar fee towards, to go towards the meal for all others. The events allow our businesses to build connections and strengthen our local economy. In the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington and its businesses on social media and through our news alert system each week. Our alerts reach more than twenty-seven hundred people. We continually update our website, buildupdarlington.org, where individuals can submit information or sign up to receive these alerts. D D R A membership is open to businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches. Members, uh, can get, anyone who's interested in becoming a member can give us a call or send us an email, info@buildupdarlington.org, and we'll feature their news, employee recognition, sales, new products, special hours, and, and other events that are going on with people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers through our news alert system. Any questions?
Can I get a digital copy of this? And thank you so much. This is wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, um, the Greater Chamber of Commerce, across the Chamber of Commerce, uh, this is Carla here.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you. Hi. Good evening. Mayor, manager, council. Some of you may not know me. Um, my name's Carla Elbington, and, um, I'm pleased to advise you that I was most recently appointed as the president at the Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce for Lamar and Society Hill. The Chamber is hosting our very next event this Thursday from five-thirty until seven at the Chamber, which kicks off our Business After Hours events for two thousand twenty-one, and we would love for you all to attend. After that, our next event will be, um, the annual membership meeting, which will be held at the grand old post office. Tickets are twenty-five dollars. We encourage everybody to attend that as well. If you don't, you will surely miss out on a good time.
What day is that?
That is, uh, March eighteenth at six p.m. And last but not least, we're planning a spectacular Freedom Fest this year that'll be held downtown Darlington. So I encourage you to mark your calendars for that as well.
What's the date?
July third, and that will begin tentatively right now, six p.m. You have any questions?
Excited to have you.
Well, I thank you all for your time. Please call the Chamber if I can be of any assistance to you whatsoever.
Remember what day you said?
Tuesday through Thursday from nine a.m. until four p.m. I'm in the office.
Good luck.
I look forward to seeing you all and speaking with you again on Thursday evening. Thank you kindly.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Informational question along those lines. Um, we've just been talking about having a second session or work session in the coming weeks. Uh, maybe we should tag along the hospitality fund and where we are going to be donating to in the coming fiscal year. I know our revenues have been down dramatically, uh, so we need to get a good idea of where we spent last year, you know, for our donations to different causes, and if we need to propel those potentially to the coming fiscal year, and maybe put that as a second topic for that meeting.
Okay. All right, uh, Layso, is there any emails where they come in from citizens wishing to appear before council?
Yes, Mayor, we did receive one, um, written letter from Mr. Lincoln Privet Senior. He has referred to this as a praise report and suggestions. To whom it may concern, I've noticed a change for the better in regards to personnel and what I see on a daily basis with my eyes. While there still are too many potholes, I witnessed newly paved streets, problem trees being removed, and sidewalks being repaired. With this being said, I want to suggest three or four items that can be easily addressed. There are five potholes on Darlington Avenue between Edwards Avenue and Dargon Street, paving this small stretch of roadway would make a big difference. Also, there are two drains at intersections that are causing damage to vehicles due to pavement on top of pavement, thus causing the drains to be four to six inches deep. You only notice these deep drains if there's a car at the intersection while you're making your turn. These intersections are located at Liberty and Orange, as well as at East Hampton and Grove Street. The final item is the litter beside the road going down Reservoir Street toward the bridge and the city limits sign. Thank you for all you have done and are continuing to do.
All right, um, unfinished business. Uh, the second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash oh one, head for ownership, Fountain Hewitt Streets to Darlington County.
I'd like the motion to approve. Uh, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash zero two, dash annexation Young slash Wyndham Streets.
This is transfer ownership of Fountain Hewitt Streets.
I apologize, I was one down. I guess I'm sorry. I'd like to motion to approve the second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash zero one, dash transfer ownership of Fountain slash Hewitt Street to Darlington County.
I'll second that one.
Mr. Uh, Nettles? Mrs. Free? Miss Backus? Siri?
Aye.
And motion carries. Transfer. New business, uh, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash oh two, annexation of Young slash Wyndham Streets.
Mr. Mayor, this is the, uh, the properties that, uh, have been recently been built up, they've had some new houses in that area. The request that we have first read on the annexation recently, within the last six months, we voted to accept the water sewer lines when they were completed, and I understand they're further along in the construction process now that they're asking for the annexation.
Part of the annexation is?
They don't have addresses yet, so we're just had, had to put it in the corner of Young and Wyndham Streets.
So, okay, I thought, is there other, are there others in San Francisco?
Excuse me?
Are there, are there air, I mean, streets in this area that's in San Francisco?
This is the four parcels. This, um, house right here, these people are in the city limits over here.
But, okay. We would not be annexing the streets, we would be annexing the property.
Yeah, we're just annexing these properties. Now, they've got a house built on three of them so far, and they're working on.
You've got eight A's pointing at a lot there.
That's the lot, but we're talking eight A.
And then eight B will be the other.
Eight B is going to be the next item on the agenda.
How many actual lots fronting on Wyndham Street? Is it that one lot at the corner of Wyndham and Young, or is it four lots?
It's three lots facing Wyndham and one facing Young Street.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So it's these three lots right here.
Yes, those three, and then that one.
That one right there. Okay.
So we're looking at annex all?
So now?
All four at one time.
Okay.
Just curious, why does it say transfer ownership of Fountain Hewitt Streets? That's not what it is. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Oh, I keep on switching between these two.
It was, it was so funny.
I'm sorry.
Uh, this be, can you not be asking about all this annexation and, and what it took? So are they, are they, um?
They are contiguous.
To what?
To the city.
So, to what? That's what I'm trying to say, to Main Street?
This house and this house, these towns right here are in the city.
And that's what I was asking, that's what I was asking the first time. What was that? What else is in?
This is in the city right here.
It should say lots.
Right up.
Okay, all right.
All right, now, Lisa, the lot, uh, to the right of where, of eight A is there on Main Street, those lots are already in the city, correct?
The, um, two that are facing North Main are, and the ones between Wyndham and Bird Avenue are, are in the city limits. And that is how they are contiguous. And obviously, it is a, of, it's an advantage to us to have the builder annex all four lots at one time, rather than go through four separate property owners.
So these are, these are any lots to look at and go?
Well, they are already building. Um, they're built, they've got three houses in construction, and one of them is, is right down to the lot because of.
The ones that, that, um, we annexed the sewer line, or we re-put the water sewer line?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thomas, Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
So now we're just looking at annexing?
Yes.
So I'll probably.
All right, I'd like to motion, um, to approve perjury ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash zero two, annexation of Young Wyndham Street lots.
I'll second.
Nettles?
Let those minutes show we're getting the lots and not the streets.
Yes. Miss Backus?
Siri? Aye.
You heard the word lots.
Yeah, I did.
So to confirm, it has been passed, the first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash oh two, annexation, adding the words lots on Young and four lots, four, uh, lots on Young and Wyndham Streets.
The, the text of the ordinance specifies what's in the deed of those, and, and those tax map numbers as well, just to let you know.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, new business, uh, annexation request for Beth Lambert.
And she's, uh, come on, I'll give you some background when we're going to have her come in. She had, uh, called the last two months asking about annexing the one eleven Laurel Avenue because she's been having problems with the septic tank and sewage coming in around. She sits in a low area, and so the, uh, she would get a benefit of having sewer, sewage, and we'd have the benefit of her coming in on the issue that we've had is the taxi of sixteen hundred dollars was cost twenty-nine thousand four hundred five, plus the engineering design survey, which is around thirty-five thousand dollars to do that. That's what, and, and Ms. Lambert asked to come before you. I told her I put it on the gym, but she wanted to opt in and appear before you tonight and add, before you can annex the property.
And, and on your map there, you see eight B, that is her house.
Thank you for coming to that, Ms. Fisher.
I don't, I've never done this, so do I just?
You just go and talk?
I just thought we were coming to listen. So anyway, um, we do have a good bit of trouble with our secretary at time with just, I mean, I know it's somebody's fault, but we are here to ask if we could join the city in city sewage to try and correct that problem. I know it's an expensive problem, I mean, expense on your side, but I don't know.
And we, we think, we think other neighbors would probably join in, and, you know, it could be extra revenue for the city, uh, with cities, with city sewage, and, uh, also with the trash pickup, too, and we really would like to be able to join.
Freddie, how many houses do we have in between them and the sewer line?
And then the, uh, corner Laurel.
Sir?
The sewer line ends right at Laurel, or at the end.
Oh, Laurel, I just said it into Laurel.
Yeah, and before Laurel, sir.
Manhole's in front of Rodney Langley's old house.
I don't know where that is. It'd give me like Bird Street.
In the curve of the curve.
The curve where Birds places two?
Yeah, you got the house, you got Bird Avenue, you got the house on the corner. The house right behind that is where Rodney Langley used to live at, the manhole's there. So there's one house in between where the sewer stops and their house.
So the sewer line goes halfway up Bird Avenue.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
It goes all the way down Bird, because it transitions into Laurel and Bird.
It's on the Young Street.
So it goes all the way to where Young and Laurel meet.
To Little Williams' house is hooked up to the city. Uh, she, she got annexed in, what, a year or two ago? Two, two years ago. Two years ago.
And she's on what street? The person you're talking about is on what street?
Young Street.
Oh, Young? Okay.
That's right.
And she is, she is actually, you know, if you're looking out our front door, her houses are right across the street.
I got you. So now I understand what you're saying.
Separating you and sewer.
There's one house.
One house separating you and the sewers. And that is thirty-nine thousand dollars to go one house down.
Run, sorry, it's a hundred and thirty-four foot.
Thirty-nine thousand dollars for us to run.
No.
Run Laurel for.
To run the whole street or just that section of it?
Run, the figure is to run down Laurel.
Is that all the way to?
Yeah.
Where Anderson?
Yeah.
So you catch the five houses potentially.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Lisa, are you in here? Previously, whenever we were, um, talking about annexation, and one of the things that we discussed was annexing the back of the country club, and a payoff amount that could tell us the profitability of adding sewer to those houses, and it was a payoff of seven, eleven years. Can you give me the payoff for just running Laurel Street and these houses, or give us that next week?
Yeah, I can get it to you next week.
Okay, and then?
I didn't realize it went all the way, all the way to Anderson.
Yeah.
So it could be good.
Would that be able to catch both sides of the street?
It's gonna be on their side of the street. We stay out of the street, so we don't have to screw it up.
Well, we have to run another line on the other side of the street?
Either that or they have to, you know, bore across each one.
Do we have the capability to house the board?
No, not, not that big a pipe.
How much does it cost to bore?
Uh, I don't have any idea.
Can you?
I can give the numbers for that, that one's off.
So, yeah, get the numbers for that, and then how much it costs to bore, if you could get that, Ms. Lisa? And then figure out if it costs board a board each time, or if we should run two fights on each side of the road. Right?
Or we run down Center Street, does that pre-build a road?
We can't just cut like we do every other street as long as the neighbors are fine and all.
Well, if on any, you go down Center Street, you just have to pre-burn it.
Okay. Um, I'm interested in that. Yeah, I want to annex the whole house, any house that touches our perimeter. My perspective, I can't pay thirty-nine thousand dollars for one house. I mean, y'all have to, and that doesn't, from a financial standpoint, it only adds cost, and there's no payoff for us. It's just an extra liability. But maybe we can get some of your neighbors, and she'll get the numbers to say just this street is something profitable for y'all. It probably will be, um, from a long-term perspective, from the city's perspective, with my knowledge of the previous towns and other neighborhoods.
If we, if you did it, would you have to take it all the way to Anderson?
That'll be another question. I was gonna ask that. So Lisa, please, I guess, get with our, um, other departments and get that answer. How much would it cost to go just to their house?
Here's my other question. Do you already have county water, correct? Okay, so, Mr. uh, Kinsall, approximately what would their, they would be charged for just sewer?
Yeah, yeah, they would just say sewer.
And street.
And about what would that run?
Based on the water bill, it's sewer base would be based off there, we would get the meter read from the county, and the sewer charges would be based off their water bill.
Again, I would suggest while we're working on this, maybe you could talk to your neighbors and say, one hundred, you know, you could, they.
I talked to two, one on one side, she was interested, the others not.
You know, um, again, um, we're, we're all at a point trying to look at, and everybody's tight on money, but at the same time, you know, it'd be beneficial to them when they resold the houses and, and less worried, having to worry about anything with sewer. Uh, but also, um, you know, it feels, it wouldn't be a significant charge to be, be able to be a part of the city. And then also, then we have people with your fire rating, also they're correct.
They're already in the fire district, so it's not really gonna change their tax situation that much.
So basically, it'd just be a difference.
That changes dramatically and teaches us.
For the city to step up, take that responsibility.
Let me ask this, if we were able to do it, uh, would we need, would we, uh, be on city water then, too?
No, sir.
You have to keep county water, we can't take anybody else for that. Not, not the wood.
That's to your advantage.
But it'd be against the law to do so.
Okay, I got you.
We have approximately a hundred accounts that have county water and city sewer.
Okay, yeah, so, but then they would, um.
Oh, real.
If I'm not incorrect, I think if my water bill is thirty dollars, my sewer bill is usually about thirty dollars, is that?
Yeah, it's right in front of you.
Same thing, so whatever your water bill, they would, in the city, it's usually about that way. Uh, but if I have a water bill that is thirty dollars, and my sewer bill part is thirty dollars, that's about, you should, what estimates that would be?
From the standpoint of utilizing our time, I would make a motion that we approve first reading, if that's the status of things. And then that way, we can get our information together, and when we come back in March, we'll know whether we can actually afford to approve second reading.
That would speed things along.
Okay, and, so we could go to our neighbors and ask them?
Yes.
And they can contact?
They can contact me.
You, and didn't have the application, just like we did or whatnot?
Yep.
And Lisa, if you get her email address, maybe you could get her a list, and, um, and maybe something that she could get somebody to sign with, like their name, their address, and their email address, and then we can help speed this whole process up.
And so they would be, they would be committed in another.
Yeah, would you mind doing that? And that would help us coordinate who's interested.
You're asking me?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I'd be glad to. Yeah, and I know the neighbors, you know, I could just, you just make name, address, and an email address?
Exactly.
And maybe a phone number? No, I'd be glad to get that.
Well, you're our best asset and make this possible, so thank you.
Okay, I'd be glad to help.
Did I get a second?
I was excited now.
You want a favor, Nettles?
Yes, aye.
Miss Backus?
Let's kind of read. Have this with the ordinance number, since we don't have it on the agenda, this is the ordinance.
Twenty twenty-one, Gastro three.
Twenty twenty-one dash oh three.
Okay.
Oh, three. Okay, so motion is carried for annexation request, uh.
First reading.
First reading, uh, Beth Lambert, uh, twenty twenty-one dash oh three.
And we would like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Unless you wanna stay here for the rest?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, uh, new business, uh, paving the fire department parking lot, uh, bid approval?
Um, I can take that, um. You seem how bad the parking lot looks, the fire department, um, is, uh.
I apologize, I was trying to get up there.
Um, we've had two bids for the, uh, the paving business, one is for the company that's actually doing the work now, are you just in construction, it's fifteen thousand one hundred. The second bid was twenty-eight thousand dollars, I did not include it in there because it was so high. Um, we do have, we do have the money in the budget, uh, listed in the budget under five eighty-three eighty-eight paving, and term of service. So I recommend once that, uh, they finish work over there, that they're going to do their work to to finish paving up the, uh, fire department. But yeah, as a corollary too, that within the next six months, we're gonna, we need to begin planning to move it to another fire department. We've had a number of cracks, uh, in the foundation with the construction work going on in Orange and Wells Streets. And so I don't think long-term we're gonna be able to stay in that building. Uh, we're working on a, uh, exit strategy, and we'll discuss possibly with council approval at a future executive session next, next month or so. We, we were working on planning for that, but we, we may be in there for a while, um, until we get out of.
From not talking with them, I understand the concerns, and it sounds, um, very worrying, so can we get a potential structural engineer to go in there?
He's coming Monday. Is the, is that parking lot, is that bad repaired, if we're gonna be moving shortly? Well, it could be several years before we move, sir, um, because we have to, uh, I'd rather talk about the tech.
And if, if anything, were to decide tomorrow the bill, it would take a year to get out of there. Parking lot is full spotter webs, it's just, I mean, it's that big chunks, um, we asked them to give us a bid while they were there. Uh, the other bid was actually twenty thousand, the other eight thousand was, was doing the back of parking lots, and two bids went from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand, but that was removing, um, all the, I asked all their double layer effect, or two layers, um, and again, if, um, if our apartment does move out, I'll sort your, your build down, it's still be usable for some of this, and so it'll be in good shape.
Um, so there were multiple bids and it goods in just one, is that why?
They were a little better, yes.
Okay, I'm related to them in a way, I believe, so don't I have to say, I mean, I am, right?
Uh.
If you feel like you're nece, it's necessary, then you can.
It's my mother's.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah.
You just have to write it down for the minutes as well.
Right?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the, uh, paving of the fire department parking lot, bid approval for goods and destruction? Don't move it. Second?
Second.
Nettles? Backus? Siggers?
Aye.
Uh, that'd be noted that, uh, Mr. Bryant, uh, refrained from voting on this. Uh, Mr. Millik made the motion, and Mrs. Reed made the second. Thank you. Okay, uh, new business housing, uh, demolition list approval?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Um, so we have, we still have several, um, houses on the demolition list from the twenty, from the last, um, approval. But I wanted to add, um, six other houses to our commercial properties, um, it's the old auto repair on South Main Street. The, um, roof is collapsing on that, and the old laundromat, um, adding that.
What, what?
The, um, hard goud, I think, on the now, on right, yes, ma'am.
Is that the one with the cactuses and stuff upon?
Yes, sir, and then the, um, old laundromat that, um, they keep acting like they're going to do something with it, and all they're gonna is take the roof off so it looks even worse. And then the other are grossly dilapidated houses, um, one on the corner of Tallulah and Syracuse, one of them is on, um, Darlington. The, um, roof is falling in, um, on those, so, and we'd just like to add those, um, six houses or structures, um, to the demolition list.
There's Tallulah Street?
Tallulah and Syracuse. In front of the white apartments.
Could we get an update of that?
In front of the white apartments, you should have one in your packet. And the top is carryover from the last, um, the six of the, may I? Um, um, Councilman, um, Gardner asked if he could get an update of the list, and I was just telling him that it was in the, kind, the package.
Sir, one last question, um, can we publicize this list? I don't know the timeline of these new ads, but if there is something that you're gonna be doing after our council meeting tonight, I'd love to have some lag of a week, two weeks, I don't know, I don't think legally we have to have any lag. Well, but I would love a lag of at least one week, um, A, publicize on all of our social media platforms the city owns, and B, get it to a historic society. Um, cause he has had an expressed interest in a previous one, I know there is publicly mandated laws that we have to follow, I'm trying to go above and beyond, Lisa, you have some help with that?
Uh, I've already sent the list to Mr. Dandy.
And I also sent him a list, so he has it twice.
And he was also sent a list for the house that was torn down on both.
That's.
And then, so, just so you kind of, kind of know what I do, um, so I have the list, and then I go around, and I rank them, like what's worse and what's the best. And once I actually rank it and decide that it's gonna be on the schedule the next five, um, I actually send a letter to, um, the property owners to let them know, you are scheduled for demolition, this house is coming down, or this structure is coming down, so that, um, they are aware, but, um, we can, um, if you still wanna publicize it on social media, I can do that for sure.
I mean, I don't think that'll harm anything, and there may be some, um, investor that has capital to turn these things around that we don't know about, and that has a vested interest, just trying to maintain, I guess.
That's what council would like to be able to do.
You got fair for stuff here?
Once these are approved, you're not gonna, he's not going out next week to turn them in, right?
No, it's not like, you know, no, I'm not going to, but, I mean.
I mean, lists have to get nailed down.
Once it gets on the schedule, if you guys would like for me to put it on social media, kind of what's coming up next, we can do that for sure.
Yeah, once these lists get, um, authenticated through council, all your routes, then let's get that on the social media.
Sure, absolutely, thank you. Any other questions?
What's, what's, um, on the list for next, I mean, what time frame, and since when, never versus before you then?
Um, it has, and, um, so whenever the, um, machine is available and weather cooperates, um, we had some catch basins that needed to be rebuilt, and some stormwater issues that were, you know, the, um, machine was being used, so when the machine's available and, um, weather allows us to. Um, unfortunately, some of these houses are in kind of bottoms, so once it does get wet, it takes a long time for it to dry out, so, you know, it gets saturated, and then, you know, a day or two of the, you know, it not raining, dries out a little bit, but not enough for that heavy machine, and we don't wanna bog that down, and then it rains again. So kind of right now is not a good season for it, um, because of all of the precipitation that we've been receiving, but once it dries out, um, we're gonna get back on it.
What's, what's on the next, what's on the list next?
Um, so it's like a five, if you were five of the list, um, it said, it has the next four, four, um, four oh five Second Street, four oh nine First Street, five oh two Washington Street, and two eighteen Edward Street. Um, are the next four that are scheduled to come down.
And five, I have another question, is the five oh two Washington Street at the bottom, is that a different five oh two Washington Street at the top?
Um, no, so the ones that are at the top are the carryover of the current list. The middle section is what's proposed, and so the bottom four is, all of them are gonna be on that top list because that's just what's been scheduled.
No, so you got five oh two here and five oh two here, so.
Right, cause five oh two's the schedule, and at the bottom, and five oh two is just all of the properties that are currently approved. So they're gonna be, all four of those should be on the cover. And if they're not, that's, yeah, all of them are on there.
So in essence, what we're acting on is that separate group, that includes twenty twenty-one.
Yes, sir, right. Any other questions?
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve the revised, um, demolition list.
I'll send it back.
Nettles?
Through.
Millik? Backus? And who, who, who got the second?
Backus.
He's got the second.
Pride? Siggers, thank you. Hi, I'm, if I should be curious, thank you, Sheila.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, Kennedy, outdoor line update, South Lane Street?
I can take that, um. We, uh, at a recent, I had a conference call with Duke Energy last week. Um, we've come to an agreement to test some lights out on South Lane Street, and four thousand lumens, they'll be LED lights, we're supposed to meet with them tomorrow, uh, sometime late in afternoon, and we're gonna pick out two or four lights to put up, see what they look like, so they should be up in the next two weeks or so. Then we'll, uh, wait for them to come, to come back, everything looks good, then we'll go ahead and shoot that entire area with, uh, four thousand lumen lights. We had a great, probably an hour, hour and a half discussion, uh, through Zoom, about what type of lumens we'd have, what type of light coverage it would give. Um, the Duke folks, uh, were saying that some of the things that we have in our ordinance, they don't have in their catalog that work. So we're gonna be working with them, we think we came to an understanding, uh, through a good amount of conversation of what that looks like, but we wanted to go ahead and test it first, instead of putting everything out all at once. So we'll meet tomorrow, we'll put in, uh, where it's gonna be on South Lane Street, then we'll let everybody know through texting and social media, to give any comments on what it looks like, if it looks too bright, if it's not bright enough, and so on, so we'll have that up before the next council meeting.
And is it, does it cost us to change the lights, are there charges?
No, it does not, we, we're, we're charged the same amount regardless of whether it's LEDs or, uh, sodium vapor lights.
So we light those lights, but they could actually get through and make all the lights in the whole city the same?
If you, if that's the desire of council, yes, sir, but we were specifically talking about the area in South Lane where it's so dark, and we've had, uh, three pedestrian deaths, I believe, in the last five years. Um, it is especially dangerous for the addition of Wal-Mart since twenty sixteen. Um, and folks went across to the Circle B in different places, uh, it's just been, it's been a problem for a while, so we, this is the way we can address it, to make things safer for folks walking and driving.
One more question, is it, is it, if it's, uh, agreed upon on that area, then we can also ask, if it's agreed upon amongst everybody, if we're gonna change the whole town between the council and the city, and update everything?
Uh, no, it would not, but the, the issue, the issue you're gonna run with then, then is, uh, that's mostly a commercial area, there's some residences, but if you go into the residential areas.
Yeah, well, I'm the same commercially.
Well, commercial, that's the.
Yeah. And if our ordinance is going to be changed to accept, you know, the style of lighting that they have, then we obviously need to update that, um.
We're, we're, we're gonna meet again at, uh, we, we, we went along with the conference call, and we looked something up, and we are gonna work with them to update the ordinance, um, they want to have input as to what that looks like, but we feel like too, since they're such a large enough company, that they should be able to provide, uh, lighting that's safe, that shields completely down. That was one of the things we kept talking about over and over again in the conference call, was we don't want lighting that shields up, that's gonna go into the next level, it'd be down on the ground, so that everybody can see.
Can see.
Showing you what you need to look at.
Right, I just, um, okay, this week, of course, I had one of my, and you all know who, who he is, um, stopped me to complain about lighting on Pearl Street, so of these lights that will shine down, not up. Is that, is, are they on Pearl Street?
That'll alleviate him if he had those lights over there.
No, I'm, I'm asking, what's happening now, because the complaint is now.
We're talking just simply right now about the issue with pedestrian traffic on South Main, but as Mayor Boyd just said, we can put it in other commercial areas, if you like what it looks like, that's what we want to put it on.
So if those weren't well, then they're shining down, and they're bright, and they're safe.
Yeah.
We can go and, and do that to the whole town, the whole town.
I just want, I, I was just trying to determine what it is, I didn't think, nobody else is complaining, but I just wanted, whatever we got on Pearl Street, this is, is, he was telling me we did something against the law, and which I don't, you know, believe, but I just, I said, since we're talking about it, let me know what's on Pearl Street.
She would buy the subway, or?
Same way, yeah.
There's several, uh, several properties on Pearl Street that don't have shielded lighting.
Right there.
That don't have filter.
Shielded, so it's pointing down.
Okay. It's shielded, okay.
And on the property.
That's what's going on, okay.
But we're talking about lighting that Duke Energy provides for us, not so much what commercial businesses provide for the parking lots and so on.
Okay.
That's what our ordinance is.
Well, we're gonna discuss that, I, I hope that they do two or four, I don't, I want one on each side of the road.
Yeah.
To see how far it goes across the road and everything.
Yeah, we, we, we're just, we're gonna, we're gonna drive, look and see, and, uh.
You said you were gonna do that tomorrow, you said?
Yeah, I just don't, I went on a specific time, but they called, so it's, uh, I told them I had meetings must be dead tomorrow, so they'd have to be late.
Are you dealing with many on this?
Excuse me?
Are you dealing with many on this?
Uh, no, the top, top land.
Okay. Um, lastly, we had also mentioned, I think Atlanta mentioned the street, um, but I had mentioned the corner of, help me, John Siggers, is it, um, Wyandotte and Cheshone? At the bottom of the hill?
Wyandotte and Arapahoe.
At the corner of Wyandotte and Arapahoe, um, around that curve is the darkest place in all, one of the darkest places in town, and it's a very dangerous area. Um, so one light would probably handle that area, maybe two, but definitely one. And then right here at the playground, at, um, the road to Judge Grill.
Mr. Pride?
In between Judge Grill and E S, there needs to be at least maybe one light there.
I think they had asked for some more lighting on Richardson Street, also.
Where's Richardson?
Going through the apartments off the spring.
That's Richmond.
Richmond, yeah. Richmond, yeah.
So.
Where that we paid.
On the left-hand side, like Spring Mark?
I'm not sure of his.
Yeah, it's right over at Spring Mark.
That strip right there doesn't have any lights, that road.
I was told that the street that we paid is door.
Would you run that road, um, Alex, give us an opinion?
I looked at the country club, there's actually a light in that curve, I don't know if it's out or not, there is a light in that curve.
Well, I've gone through there my whole life, and if it's there, it's darker, then we need one more somewhere. Do you agree?
It gets dark.
Yeah, that, that light might be like the one on Miller Street that's behind, man, it's so dark, it's that one little block between Jefferson and, and Tallulah. If the light stays on, it's fine, but it does not stay off.
That's what it is.
That's, that's around the corner for me, I've got a.
Yeah.
Pole number, I'll go view the police with a knife, so they can check.
Yeah, anytime you see somebody, you just get the pole number, that's what I'm thinking.
They really will, I think that.
I don't have, they've been there, I mean, you know, this ain't the first time I've talked about that, but I'm doing it again, I, I put it in, but.
I'd say everybody's thing, old Robbie Killgoe, William Jackson, another gentleman, William, um, John Wallace, they went around this whole town, got all these pole numbers, and went over to Duke and turned them in, and earned they didn't get them all fixed, so.
All right, thank you, uh, any, uh, questions, uh, or information from the department head?
I've got, yeah, I have number two under the water department, um. I'm not sure where we are on that, is that just previous information, or is something new going on down there on East Frog Street?
They're working this, this, like, before the well is killing them, they're trying to, all they like is to ruin.
It just said major sewage on East Frog Street, I didn't know whether that was something new or whether that was a carryover.
That's carryover, that's just project.
So for an update of the project, we're just waiting for it to dry off, and then they're repairing it.
I don't know if they fixed the road.
And then we're done.
Are we also the bypass now? Yeah, well, that's the sewer for him.
Yeah, all the, all the pipes are down, the machines are gone, and why can't see, it looks like they just went and paved it.
They're trying to keep putting rock in and backing them down, trying to get it drying up clean.
I inquired to, um, a few of the administration about fixing our water leaks in our brand-new roads. Um, we're waiting on our truck getting this tagged, if we get that situated, this Gloria Fritton or Alex.
Talking about the, the hot box.
That's right.
We've got everything taken care of, we're just waiting on, um, Reed Davis, he's gonna come and do training with us, because we haven't done any official training on it. Maybe I'll come do all of our training, I'm waiting on him to give me a training. because we haven't done any official training on it, he's not gonna do all of our training, I'm waiting on him to give me a training date now. He'll probably send two or three days with us.
This is dry weather?
Yeah.
Has such some dry weather?
They might have dry weather too.
Uh, my question on that, will we be available, uh, able to, uh, like the corner, for example, of, um, Hampton and Main, we turn our French shop and IJ, they're stations like that are real wealth, are, are, aren't our roads, DO two roads, are we, will we have the ability to patch and touch up some of the state roads without causing a problem?
This is terrible.
We got to be careful, if we start patching their road, then they're allowed to give it to us. Uh, they've got a machine, they, they bought a hot box, our hot box is actually off of the DOT spec. Only thing that we got that they don't is the infrared unit that we have to be able to patch around potholes and, I mean, around, um, manholes and stuff. They've got the same exact unit sitting out at the county shop that we got.
My understanding is from my time, I asked the same exact question, was along, we asked real nice beforehand and get the okay, we're good to go.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I mean, in no stairs, but I'd like you to see them do it, or us do it, so I do it correctly and.
I have the same.
Roads that, that gives the perception, perception of the city residents that they're our city, they're not ours, but then at least that they see that we're trying to make things go through that.
I have the same question with Medford, now, have you had any further que- conversations on that subject about Medford?
Um, I talked to Treasure about it and, and Leslie McClellan, and, um, it's on the list to be resurfaced, I don't know when, but, um, I mean, they, he said their list, they got a list that's like a one year, five year, ten year, so he said, I mean, he doesn't know when it's gonna fall, it's, to them, it's not a major street. I mean, it's in bad shape, but it's not a major street, it does have a lot of traffic, but I think they're looking at some of the bigger streets first.
If someone might correct me if I'm wrong, am I too rude to ask the question, uh, if DOT would provide us with a list of streets the city had gone and they've paved for us in the last five years? Is that a rude question?
I hope it's not.
I think so, ever.
Anybody else see that as rude? Could you ask that question to them?
So you want a list of the streets that they've paved in the city in the last five years?
Yes, sir.
I'll call Treasure tomorrow and see if I can get it.
Thank you.
And also see, I know they've got a few more streets that are supposed to be coming up, um, I think in the next year, I'll find out what those streets are. I think you said, uh.
Grocery, the dogs, to be, to be bided on in March, so then they have, once they bid on it, they have, uh, up to eighteen months to pay. Contractor does, uh, fifty-two bypass, I understand, I understand from Ba- Ballows out to Pizza Hut is on the bid. Here on the docks, it'll be paid real soon also, um, that's the only two, other two that I know.
You said the road in front of Pizza Hut?
Where? Two Pizza Hut bypasses.
Okay. Yeah, I don't care any capital investments he's done in the city, he can happily include it in that, I just wanna know where our money's going.
So I'd like to know what's the status of First Street for that manhole on First Street?
Is that by Pizza Hut?
You, you thinking of Mayor or Mr. Kinsler?
Kinsler, I'm asking the same question to you, Ross, in a row.
Manhole. That's the one you looked at.
That sinkhole on First Street?
You said Cinco, not now.
For First, that sinkhole on First Street, everyone, I hear you saying questions, what is the status on that sinkhole?
Yeah, we went out there, that's actually, um, I have to follow up, I met DOT out there, it's actually a, um, storm drain. And I talked to, we think it's a storm drain, and I talked to, um, Treasure and I think Leslie about, they met me out there, and I'll follow up with them tomorrow and see, um, what their plans are, but they were gonna, first they were talking about just putting dirt in it. But I mean, I thought that's not gonna work, I mean, if it's a hole, the dirt's just gonna go down there again, so. I'll check with them and see, um, what they've done as far as trying to get a timeframe to fix it.
Now, also after your list, Hardee's. Hardee's, a broad street, and section by there, one.
You talking about the turn?
The big section on the, the side of Hardee's right there.
You talking about the turn in there?
Yeah.
I talked to Treasure about that the other day when you asked me, I met him out of Walmart, he said he was gonna follow one with, with Leslie or Kevin and see, you know, where they were at.
He said, just keep pushing behind him, because, you know, whenever he does it, I'll drop the ball, he said, we keep pushing. And the, for Idris, um, Broad Street to be repaired?
It will be put in Thursday, Friday.
And you have, there were two, there were two boards that, they're in the works eventually, or?
Not hundreds, we got a removal line out at, on Old Florence with George.
So there was another one, was there any other little bad for Idris, Charles, that wasn't working?
The one they were trying to work on up on First Church of God.
Oh, yeah, they, they tried to.
Hey, Freddie? I believe it's Second Street, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a big old pile of dirt in the middle of that road and some houses you can't get to right now.
They come in, they, that's the same thing, they're rocking it too, trying to get it repaired, that's where they've been replacing sewer downstairs.
Okay, why is the, I was there two weeks ago, maybe a week ago, and you can't drive down that road?
That sucks, and they have to come in and out from the ends, they get people in and out, but they scattered the rocks now, most of them.
Okay, but are we not gonna, um, put it back to rock so that they can travel on that road until we get it fixed?
It's, they try and do, but they bogging down.
Okay, it's just too soft.
It's just too wet, everything's just bogging in.
Okay, yeah, I went through there, my car was.
Yeah, it, it's set up to be paved, but it just, it's same situation, it's just too wet.
Okay.
So Alice, in Russell Street, did you ever get paid with the guy for DOT about Russell Street?
Um, yeah, I talked to him about that, because I met Treasure out there, about a month, month and a half ago. He said he was gonna put in a work order on it, and I asked him the other day, and there again, he said he was gonna check and see where it was at with the work order, you know, in the work order system, um. His, his thing to me is that they're twenty-five people short, and they've got hundreds of work orders and they have to prioritize them, but, I mean, you gotta hold somebody could fall in and get hurt. To me, that should be, and it's not gonna be a hard fix, um.
What's his territory he's over?
Sir?
What territory is he over?
He's over, he's the resident guy for Darlington County, he took, um.
Yes, Darlington County?
Yeah, he took, um.
Roy Moore.
Yeah, Roy Moore, he was done.
Okay.
And what's the status on that study on foundation?
They're working on, they're getting addressed, they're getting ready to do salary survey, or income survey.
Right.
PD Council, CAG has to do income survey.
Look, there was a study y'all said started four months ago.
On farm, they're working on, that's, that's for the grant.
I knew that, I mean, I mean, wouldn't, that's the standard, it's just.
She's getting ready, she's getting ready to do income survey.
We're also, they are also doing the needs assessment, um, public hearing on February twelfth at two o'clock at the city administration building. So they are accepting comments on the needs assessment that they've done, the work they've been doing the last four months.
But what, which administrative building, here?
We're Howard's office, my office, sorry.
What do they, what do they mean?
That is at, uh, two o'clock next Friday.
Chief Washington, I think you showed us the picture you got of you, SUV, is it one or?
Um, yes, sir, it's actually three, um, that was the, um, grant that we received from, um, USDA, um, that, that you all supported. And again, we, on behalf of the police department, police department, and our staff, we thank you guys for your support.
Thank you, very, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
And I want to commend you to, uh, all the officers, staff, people for driving past twenty-five miles an hour to speed it down in school zone and, uh, taking care of business over there.
Yes, sir.
Taking care of our children over there. All right, any other, other comments?
All right.
Any more council comments, do we have, uh, any, uh, council comments?
I have a motion, my comment is I have to make a motion to adjourn, there apparently being no other council comments.
I'd like to object, I've been stuck, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'd like to object, I've been staying at home for six months by myself, I'm enjoying some company.
Before we adjourn, the reminders are Tuesday, March the second, twenty twenty-one, on the evening of the drawings to city council, six thirty. And also the reminder of, uh, the January converse meeting Thursday night at five thirty, anybody's invited to that also. All right, um, anybody in motion to adjourn? My friends?